Good evening and welcome everyone to the January 8th, 2020 City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum present tonight. So we will begin with our new business, which starts with item A, which is a zoning application for approximately 0.89 acres located along Bradyville Pike, west of Minerva Drive, to be rezoned from RS 10 to PCD. It's the Bradyville Center PCD. Ken Zaya Buddha applicant and Ms. Kerr.
Thank you Chair Jones.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year everybody. Now this subject property is located along the north side of Bradyville Pike, west of Minerva Drive. The property is a combination of two parcels consisting of .9 acres and they're identified as location at 1611 and 1615 Bradyville Pike. Each parcel is currently developed with an existing single-family dwelling unit and is zoned RS 10, single-family residential district. The applicant wishes to rezone the property to PCD Planned Commercial Development District. The proposed PCD would consist of 7,280 square foot multi-tenant commercial center. The development would give single access point to Bradyville Pike with no connections to neighboring properties. The proposed development would include one, one single-story multi-tenant commercial building with one outdoor patio dining area and one plaza seating area on the west end of the building. Primary exterior materials for the building will be brick. Minimum building setbacks for the development would be 42 foot on the front facing Bradyville Pike, 10 foot on the sides and 20 foot on the rear. Amenities would include 40% of total open space, 7% formal open space consisting of an outdoor dining area and outdoor seating area with benches. Surrounding zoning includes commercial fringe to the south across Bradyville Pike and adjacent to the east in each consisting of a variety of commercial uses. Adjacent properties to the north are the Cypress Avenue subdivision and to the west and that is zoned RS 10. The proposed development would include 15-foot landscape buffer along north and west property lines. The future land use map of the 2035 comprehensive plan recommends that suburban residential is the most appropriate land use character for the subject property. Compatible zoning districts would include single-family residential district with a density of 2.0 to 3.54. The proposed zoning is not consistent with the recommended recommendation of the future land use map for this property and is more consistent with the suburban neighborhood commercial zone land use character. Due to the location of the property along the state highway and adjacent properties consisting of commercial uses, the planning commission will need to determine whether this is an appropriate instance to deviate from the recommendations of the future land use map. A copy of the pattern book has been included in the agenda materials and the applicant is in attendance to make a presentation regarding the proposed zoning and to answer any questions. And then after that, the planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing and discuss the matter and formulate a recommendation for city council and I will be available to answer any questions as well, either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any planning commission members have any questions? And we're going to have a presentation, Mr. Roundtree?
Happy New Year everybody. My name is Clyde Roundtree with Hudson Steel Engineering. Chairman Jones, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present Bradyville Center. And I'd like to thank Amelia and Margaret Ann and Matthew on their hard work helping me get this to a point where we can present it to you. We put a lot of energy into this and Mr. Zaya Buddha is here if you have any personal questions for him. But he's on this property for many, many years. He came to the planning commission multiple years ago to try to get this rezoned commercial. Since that time, he owned one house, now he owns two houses. So there's two houses that he'd like to remove and go ahead and put this commercial center in place. As was already mentioned by Amelia, the adjacent zone, I'm just kind of walking through the PowerPoint real quickly. The adjacent zone, there's residential to the rear and also to the eastern side or the western side of the property. And as far as on the eastern side of the property, I believe it's commercial. And then across the street is commercial. The commercial buildings around this particular piece of property are out of various states of construction as far as how nice they are. There seems to be a new automotive center that's all brick and very, very nice. The adjacent property to the property of the planning of rezoning is actually very rough. It's kind of, it's kind of interesting how it's developed. So we would be kind of taking a real concerted effort to make a real nice statement in the neighborhood. As far as the utilities, basically start from Bradyville Pike. As far as topography is concerned, a lot kind of slopes to the rear back corner of the property and we have green space available for any kind of stormwater management, but we'd have to have on the back portion of the property. As mentioned, you can, you can kind of see it from the aerial. The adjacent property to the right is, it looks like it's just a combination of phases and expansions and different kind of roof types. So our building would really be something very, very nice and hopefully would be some kind of catalyst to the area. We do feel like this is appropriate and it's kind of like a little commercial core inside an existing neighborhood. So expanding that core with a nice facility would, I think would be a real advantageous piece to this neighborhood. And just some of the adjacent buildings, the White House is one of the houses that Mr. Penn owns, the Brick House in the center is one of the homes he owns. There's an apartment complex on the back corner adjacent to the property on the next street over. And these are small images, but you can kind of see the building I'm mentioning to the And then there's, there's basic accommodation commercials around the, around the subject property. The site plan, as Amelia mentioned, it's a 7,200 square foot commercial strip center type of building with ample parking. We're able to overpark the requirements because of the site being as large as it is. And the formal open space will be on the left-hand side of the building. And as Amelia mentioned, it's a multi-tenant type of structure, so it could be one, two, three, four, up to five different types of users. We're hoping that that in-unit where the formal open spaces would be some kind of restaurant. Some of the staff are rooting for a, there's a restaurant right across the street there. Would like them to move over here, it'd be really nice for them. We originally proposed two access points on the site, but due to some constraints based on the way the road works on Bradyville Pike, we were not able to put a secondary entrance. So we worked back and forth on that with staff. Also, there was a little compulsion to try to get maybe a connected shared access drive, which would be really, really nice, but we weren't able to get that one together either. But it's something that if there was ever any movement on, on the property to the, to the right, it'd be nice to have a shared access. We have the perimeter sidewalk that's required, foundation planting that's going to be required. The signage would be either on the building or right out front and center along Bradyville Pike. And as far as, nothing real fancy about the site plan as far as it just fit well on the site. We don't feel like we overbuilt the site. We've got plenty of additional green space available to us and met all the criteria that are necessary for the site plan. The building itself is really the highlight of the project. It's taken on the current architectural standards. As I mentioned, a lot of the buildings in the neighborhood are basically substandard buildings. So for this to be all masonry with the raised parapet walls, insulated fronts, diversified roof line, I mean, it's, it's a really nice looking building. It'll be a real nice asset to the neighborhood. And as you can see, it already kind of shows how the building could potentially be divided into, into five different types of tenants. There are awnings on the front, but there's also awnings on the, on the initial part of the rear. So from the public right-of-way, the building has a real nice base. Turn to the sides and all the doors will be on the rear for service. This is an architectural rendering of how it could look if we do get a restaurant tenant on the end cap. We would have potentially some sort of umbrella tables and patio dining. So it could be, like I said, a real nice asset to the community. It'd be a very different kind of bricks with some, you know, detailing on the soffit. Like I mentioned, metal awnings, a lot of glass and just some nice detailing. As far as the landscape requirements, as Amelia mentioned, there's a type D buffer that's required on two sides of the property. And those are basically butting the residential and then we'd have screening all along Bradyville Pike to make sure that the parking is somewhat obscured from Bradyville. Plenty of street, you know, shade trees in the parking lot, foundation plant along the building. So that's something else you're not going to find in the neighborhood right now. Those landscape standards aren't, aren't, aren't in the neighborhood. So not only will the building be an enhancement to the neighborhood, but the landscape standards will also really be kind of a trendsetter for the neighborhood. That's just a little of the materials. It'll be aggregate patios more than likely unless there's a restaurant tenant that wants to put in something a little bit more upgraded from aggregate. We were able to line up the driveway with the adjacent or the property across the street to make sure access was smooth if someone had to cross Bradyville Pike. And then I'll have benches and trash receptacles right now as part of the formal open space. As mentioned, we'd hope that there'd be some tables there for outdoor dining. And with that in mind, if there's any questions you may have, I'm excited about Bradyville Center. I think after our workshop, you know, there's, there's some excitement that this will be coming in. This is kind of, the theme for my night really is kind of renewal projects, you know, places where we're doing something new and kind of existing areas and kind of hopefully bringing some revitalization to those areas. This area, as you may know, is kind of a culturally diverse area. There's a lot of layton population here, so it has a little bit of its own kind of neighborhood vibe and a lot of the businesses that service this area are kind of specifically directed towards serving those cultures in terms of their food products and those kind of things. So it's kind of, it's a neat asset. I think it'd be a real, something that would be really, really positive for the neighborhood. So with that in mind, I'm available for any question you may have and thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Roundtree or Ms. Kerr, Mr. Smotherman?
Mr. Roundtree, I know this is a heavily traveled road and when people walk down this road, there's never a sidewalk and it does, I don't see anything that indicates that there's a sidewalk in front of this. Is there one planned? And I know the properties beside it do not have one.
Well, there's two challenges. There's a really pretty severe kind of drainage swell as well that's in the front of this property. So it's, and it would be a patch of sidewalk primarily because it goes into that residential and not a lot of controllers would go down the street.
Yeah, it's going to dead end on both ends.
It'd probably look more curious than anything, I think, you know, I love the idea, but it's...
I was just wondering if it would prevent walk-through traffic traveling through your parking lot, but I don't know. I know you've faced the challenges with the two access points and you've tried to resolve that. You've put a hammerhead almost in it on one side of the parking lot there and by doing so, it would almost back out onto the sidewalk if you were to do one, so it's kind of...
Mr. Smotherman, I think I've gotten a little bit of an update for you on the Bradyville Pike roadway project. There will be sidewalks when that, when that road project is, is constructed and we have started the right-of-way acquisition process for, for that. And I think I've heard about a year before construction begins, Mr. Huddleston, a nod or a, okay, a thumbs up, that'll do too.
At least, at least a year.
At least a year.
Okay. So about a year into the future, this section of roadway or would it be the section of roadway closer to Rutherford Boulevard?
I've been working on that some, Mr. Smotherman.
It's a phase project, I guess is what I'm asking.
The state is, will be doing the construction project for, actually I think we'll manage the construction, but it's a state project. It will be a three-lane roadway with curb and gutter and sidewalks. And I believe that sidewalks will be on both sides. So the ditches will be eliminated from, from the, not broad...
So there will be curb and gutter in...
Curb and gutter all the way to Rutherford.
But I'm assuming it's going, the part that's being improved is going from Broad Street all the way out to Rutherford?
Correct.
And will that be done in phases or are they doing the entire road in one phase?
It's in one, that is one phase, but certainly there'll be, you know, there'll be utility work and then road work and then a lane and then, so it'll take some time.
Big stretch of road.
And that, that will be, I would think would be a concern to a new business going in there, that starting within somewhere between a year and two years from now, there'll be road construction that will take, take quite a while. And Mr. Griffith has said in the past that the most difficult road project is to convert a two-lane to a three-lane because it's, you've got to route traffic somewhere and there's really no place to do it. So it's very difficult. Those are difficult road projects. It's easy to build a five-lane because you go build two new, two new lanes and then you put traffic over there and then you rebuild the old two lanes for the most part. But this will be, this will be a difficult construction project and it'll be time-consuming.
It's much needed, but I'm sure we'll get it before too long, I hope.
As Matthew said, we're in right-of-way, we're appraising and ready to start making offers on, on some of the smaller sections. There are about 150 tracks that we have to acquire right-of-way from. And actually, there's very little right-of-way given that the ditches are currently within the right-of-way. We need very little additional right-of-way, but we need slope easements, drainage easements, construction easements from, from 150 some properties. So it's, it's, it'll be a process.
And I think the, the plan is a little bit deceptive in how close the, the parking lot's going to be to the, to the right-of-way. We will require at least five feet of, a five-foot planting yard in between the, the property line and the, and the edge of the, of the parking lot.
Have we assessed the right-of-way impact on this project? So that they wouldn't be planning it now to, and then they're going to have to tear it up again later?
I think, I think that, that knowing that there is a project and knowing that there is a amount of right-of-way that is needed is that when they submit a site plan, that will be built into the actual civil plans that get submitted.
My second question is, if you were to create connectivity or if that were to happen in the future and you had to take out parking spots, will you still be at your parking level?
We're three over right now, so I think we could accommodate some kind of...
It looks like three parking spots would do it.
Yeah, we were trying to get it to where they could go around that, the adjacent building around the backside. I actually drove that today and there's a mechanic shop back there and it's just full of cars, but, but it would be nice to be able to get out to Rutherford.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. All right. We will open the public hearing and ask anybody that would like to speak to come forward. If we do have anybody, you can speak for up to three minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name and your address. Make all your comments to the planning commission and not to members of the audience or the developer. So with that being said, we will open the public hearing for our first item of business. And seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments?
Chair, I make a motion to, that we approve subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Now to item B, is a zoning application for approximately 0.71 acres located along East Vine Street, east of South Highland Avenue, be rezoned from RS 8 to PRD, East Vine Villas PRD. Blue Sky Construction, Inc. is our applicant. Ms. Kerr?
Thank you, Chairman Jones. This property is located along the south side of East Vine Street, east of South Highland Avenue. The property consists of .71 acres and is identified as 530 East Vine Street. The property is currently developed with a existing single-family dwelling and is zoned RS 8, single-family residential district. The applicant wishes to rezone the property to Planned Residential District, PRD. The proposed PRD would consist of six-unit townhome development called the East Vine Villas. The proposed gross density would be 8.45 dwelling units per acre. The development would have access to East Vine Street and no connections to neighboring properties are proposed. The proposed development would include two buildings, each having three two-story townhomes with, townhome units with two-car garages. The units directly on East Vine Street, the rear, would have rear entry garages and the units to the rear of the property would have front entry garages. The primary exterior materials would include painted brick and cementa siding. The minimum building setbacks of the development would be 20 feet from the front facing East Vine Street, 10 feet on the sides and 35 feet on the rear. Amenities would include formal open space of 47% and, I mean, open space of 47% and 5% formal open, open space consisting of a plaza area with a grilling station, bench seating and a dog run. The surrounding zoning includes RS 8 to the north across East Vine Street and to the adjacent properties to the east and the west. The adjacent property to the south is RM 16. The proposed development would include an eight-foot landscape buffer along the east, south and west property lines. The future land use map of 2035 comprehensive plan recommends that the subject property develop with a suburban residential land use character. This classification intends to be a transition from urban to rural residential developments and is predominantly located on the periphery of the city. The comprehensive plan calls out RS 15, RS 12, RS 10 as existing zoning districts that are compatible with this designation. Point two to 3.54 dwelling units per acre is the recommended density. The subject property is currently zoned RS 8 and would allow for a slightly higher density than what is recommended with the suburban residential land use character. The proposed development is more consistent with auto-urban or general residential land use character, which is shown on the future land use map that is in your agenda packet. And it's also shown that, that the auto-urban residential at the top of the, the land use map shows that across from East Vine Street, that it is zoned the general residential. Auto-urban residential include detached or attached residential dwellings with compatibility and open space requirements. Less openness and separation between developments, I mean, between dwellings and interior yard consumed by driveway and off-street parking and density of 3.54 to 8.64 dwelling units per acre. Single-family residential attached uses are not consistent with the suburban residential land use character. However, the proposed density of 8.45 dwelling units per acre is not consistent with the plan's recommendation. The planning commission will need to determine whether this is an appropriate instance when to deviate from the recommendations of the future land use map. A copy of the pattern book is included in your agenda materials and the applicant, Mr. Roundtree, is in attendance to make a presentation regarding the proposed rezoning and to answer any questions after the public hearing. The planning commission will need to, will need to discuss this matter and formulate a recommendation to city council. I will be available to answer any questions either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Kerr before we have our presentation? Mr. Roundtree?
Chairman Jones and the commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Hudson Steel Engineering. Again, I'm excited about presenting to you East Vine Villas, working with Mr. Brian Burns of Blue Sky Construction. This is a home that is in currently in a kind of a dilapidated situation on East Vine Street. It's a larger home, but it looks like it's been in kind of bad shape for a while. Mr. Burns was able to purchase the property with a desire to create an infill project into the downtown area. This is kind of one of the first of its kind in that regard. We're seeing a lot of these starting to come through our office where people are beginning to look at the opportunities in downtown. And again, just like the last project, it's a chance for bringing some revitalization to an area that could be revitalized. As Amelia mentioned, it's surrounded by RS 8. There's also RM 16 on the back street behind this particular piece of property. And Septic and Sewer are all serviced from the East Vine Street, so there wouldn't be any issue on the rear of the property as far as having to do any kind of infrastructure. The neighborhood is, it's kind of a transitional neighborhood. There's, you know, beautiful estate homes on Main Street. There's apartment complexes right around the corner. There's houses in various stages of disrepair and there's some beautifully restored Craftsman homes. So it's just that spot that we're working with. It's a few blocks out of downtown, so it's, it's within that, you know, I think it's whether it's within the urban core that we're looking for, but it has that character of what I think we're looking for as far as bringing some vitality to downtown. It is walkable to the downtown square. If someone were to purchase this home, it's within a walkable distance to downtown. As far as adjacent homes, you know, they're all, the one right next door, that bottom one on the right-hand corner, that is actually the house right next to us, which is more of a historic home. It's in pretty good shape. I think it's owner occupied, I believe. Looks like someone's taking care of it. The home we're talking about that's in question is at the front-center picture on the bottom. It's, it's right on the line of this cross street. I don't know which street that is right offhand, but it's basically right on the sightline of the street. And just to mention, there is a, I'm sorry, let me go back if I can. There's an adjacent piece of property right next to this one that Mr. Burns tried to acquire that's shown in that bottom left-hand corner. Make sure, the owners are not ready to sell it, but part of our site plan, the way we put our driveway was if that land comes up for potentially a purchase, Mr. Burns would like to continue this pattern development onto that piece of property. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. There are some commercial businesses further down the street, so there's even some commercial mixed in with the residential as well. The site plan, as mentioned, there are six units. There are three fronting East Vine right up against the road and then there's three behind. The parking is designed to be screened from the buildings to kind of keep that kind of residential character that's in the neighborhood now and not bringing a lot of parking in case into East Vine Street. The building's on the front, I'll just go ahead and show you that front elevation. The building's facing East Vine would have front porches. This is a unique project in the fact that the rear elevation is actually the bottom elevation where the garages are for the rear entry. And that is actually the same elevation that's going to be on the front of the rear unit. So it's a little confusing there, but, but what you need to know, the building's on the top, the three on the front on the top, those are what are going to face East Vine Street. So it does have a, have a Craftsman character. It's a mixture of painted brick and, and cement, just Hardy board and the porches are really key. Those, we want to create kind of a front yard feel to those, so they're going to address the street. As Amelia said, they're about 20 feet off the street, but they're going to have a real nice address to the street. And that's kind of consistent with how the houses look in the neighborhood now. As far as the rear units, they would have garage access or they have a man door and a garage door that would, this is still facing East Vine. So as you look to the rear of the project, you'd see that bottom elevation and the top elevation in this particular page, those are the rears of those rear units. The rear units will have private patio areas on the back of them, so they'll have some green space in addition to the formal open space associated with their buildings. Working with Amelia, we really wanted to make sure there's some detail on the sides of the buildings because anything facing the right-of-way or it can be visible from the wide-of-way, wanted to have some detail. So we added windows, some striations along the building and also a little bit of an eyebrow and top circuit on the top of the roof line and diversify the materials along the way as well to kind of create some architectural interest from East Vine. As far as landscaping, as Amelia mentioned, the only thing that's different is right now a type A buffer is somewhat required, but Mr. Burns would like to have a privacy fence around the property. And as far as we add, we showed some options for fencing because we are not sure exactly what type of fencing, you know, it's either going to be a vinyl fence or a privacy wooden fence. Originally, we didn't know if we would need that, but based on kind of where we're at, it might be a nice element to have as far as securing the property. And as far as amenities concern, a dog run would be appropriate in this area because there's not a lot of yard area associated with those front units. And there is some green space behind the rear units that'll be common space. So there'll be a little bit more than just the formal open space that people can utilize if they have a pet or want to throw a ball. But we're excited because the density's a little higher than what is recommended, but we feel like it fits the site well. We're able to park adequately. We have two extra guest parking spaces and we feel like it, it's fitting for the, for the texture of the neighborhood, at least the direction the neighborhood's going into. As far as the color scheme, Mr. Burns likes to do painted brick and that kind of gives them a little bit more of an older character of the buildings themselves and it's kind of a more of a muted palette of kind of an off-white kind of looking structure with kind of subtle accents, be it grays or light blues. So characteristic wise, a lot of those older homes in the neighborhood are kind of white or yellow or that kind of vein. So this wouldn't be something that would stick out like an albatross. We're hoping it'd be very much architecture in the fabric of the neighborhood. And with that in mind, I'm open to any questions. Mr. Burns is here, if you have any specific questions for him. He's excited about the project. He's excited about bringing some vitality to downtown. He's excited about walkability. The biggest challenge we have, we're over five or six units and we feel like because the site can accommodate the six comfortably, we'd like to stick with, six with the six units if we can. But he also feels like he's taking a little bit of financial risk going into this neighborhood, so that also helps protect him financially from going into a neighborhood where he's kind of an early adopter. kind of an early adopter in terms of adding this kind of product. There's nothing like it on the street currently. So with that in mind, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Is there the intention for the buildings for the rear elevation where you've got the open patio? Will that be enclosed? Will it be fenced off?
They'll have their own private patios, Mr. Moore. And then there's some yard beyond that that's going to be just common green space for the neighborhood.
It won't be open like it's shown on the diagram? Okay.
No, I think we intend to close.
It shows a fence.
Oh, does it? I missed it.
Yeah. One of them shows.
Oh, okay.
Are we talking about the rear patios and the rear units?
Yeah.
Yeah, all my patios will have a fenced-in area for the patios themselves, so you'll have privacy on your patio.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Brian, I know you say on here that the common open space will be maintained by the HOA, but in the future, if we could, could we go ahead and put a line in there that the dog run hours are determined by the HOA or something like that so that they understand that there's going to have to be some restriction on when that thing can have pets and stuff roaming in it and when they can't?
I don't want it to turn into a dog kennel.
Right, right, exactly.
At some point, we need to do on stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah, it's just one line in the planning book that I think would take care of it.
If I may ask, is there any kind of differentiation in color between any of these properties on the backside? It's just so monotonous with all three of them going back.
I usually like making all my units like, I did ones on Clark Boulevard, that's kind of a monotone or all the same color. On these over here, I'll probably differentiate, each unit will probably have a different color.
Okay.
I haven't exactly, until I get out there and start looking at it, it's hard for me to tell you the exact tone of colors, but I'll make sure it looks suitable with the neighborhood.
Thank you. It's a good-looking project.
Thank you.
And can I ask Mr. Burns? I really like painted brick. I love that, but it looks like on building one, the main would be the center building where the painted brick is. I just wonder, how long does painted brick actually stay painted before it needs to be painted again?
Well, we use a paint, it's made by Sherman Williams, called Sherman Williams Duration. It's the second-best paint Sherman Williams sells, and it's got a 25-year warranty on it.
Really?
Yes. They make one paint better, but it's sort of cost-prohibited to use. I've never, you know, I've been doing the painted brick for 10 or 15 years, and I've went by like General's Retreat and other places, and I've never really noticed the brick, unless a weed eater or something gets it or somebody hits it or something. It usually really doesn't ever, doesn't wear, and we've got where we don't put any kind of wood that's stained anymore. We usually go with the fiberglass columns, and we use the same 25-year paint on it. So usually the product, I think, stays looking good for a long time.
Right. Good to hear.
And it will have all the recessed lights that shine down, that'll come on at night automatically. Everything will be lit up real well. There'll be no, nobody will be able to turn their outside lights off. Everything's going to be lit up and come on and off with dusted on timers, just like General's Run and General's Landing are.
And exterior paint would, again, covered by an HOA?
Yes, everything will be under the HOA, all the exteriors and landscaping, mowing, dog runs, all that'll have HOA set up where everybody else will be paying their dues there.
Thank you.
My goal is to keep these in the 250 to 275 range where they're still affordable units, but still look nice.
I had recently had a builder tell me you'd probably have to repaint a painted house every five to 10 years.
No, he's using a back paint.
I also had a question.
Tell him to buy better paint.
Yeah. I also had a question about the parking. So we're allowing or we are counting four spaces per unit, two in the garage and two directly behind it?
We have the driveway set up for two cars, and we've had the garages set up for two cars. And then we have spare parking, two spaces, yes. There's no, we don't have it set up for any street parking. There's no street parking. And we'll have an HOA, there is no street parking.
And so the garages, that fits. I don't know anything about whether that's, you know, the right size or not. I mean, you could put anything down there. So I just, eighteen by 23 will hold most cars and the trash can and get two cars in?
Yes, ma'am. We've not had any problem, and that's the same size of a lot of our garages at General's Run and General's Retreat.
Okay.
And we've had some even smaller. It's not so much the, the 18 is fine because the width isn't what gets you. It's usually the depth. As long as you've got 22 to 23 feet, you've got room to put garbage cans on a wall and pull most normal-sized cars in.
Okay.
If you're driving a big truck, it's probably outlawed, so.
Park it outside.
It's parking outside, yeah.
Yes.
We did try to work with them about possibly making those an 18-foot wide opening on those garages. I have been through several of the developments where he's referencing and measured the length of the garage doors, and they're 16 feet, which was what he's proposing is a 16-foot opening, which is eight feet per car. And in one of the developments I went through, it's a multi-use area, and there's separate parking areas away from just the garage with the two, or the parking, surface parking in front of the garages and then the garages. So we did try to work with them to try to get the size of that to be open to an 18-foot, not 18-foot for the full interior of the garage, but for the garage door.
Most all, even if you go into your, if you go into even the very high-end homes, there's really, there's almost, you can do taller garage doors, and that's not, but to do an 18-foot garage door is a special order, special custom-made garage door. There's virtually nobody that uses 18-foot garage door. Garage doors usually come in eights, nines, or sixteens. An 18-foot garage door is not even a normal-sized garage door.
I think it's more the width of the actual garage than the garage door, because what he's doing is he's relying on the garage parking to meet minimum parking requirements. And, excuse me, and so we're going to have to restrict those garages to be used for vehicular parking, but we know that people are going to have some amount of, they're going to have stuff on the sides, for lack of a better word, they're going to have some of their personal stuff on the side. Eighteen feet wide is the width of two nine-foot parking spaces in a shopping center parking lot. And, you know, sometimes that could get kind of tight, especially if you have a truck or SUV. So I think what we were wanting was a little bit more cushion so that, especially because this is being used to meet minimum parking requirements, that, because it's 3.3 spaces per unit, that these garages have a little bit more cushion in it, and we thought maybe a 20-foot-wide actual garage would provide a little bit of cushion for the eventual stuff on the sides of the garage where people are going to be flinging open their doors. It's going to be there.
I don't know with our units and our space, we can get 20-foot garages. I think that's the problem we had on there. I like to make the garages as large as possible, but I don't know if we got the space to do the, in townhomes, sometimes things get tight, and most townhomes in town only have a one-car garage. Where, I was, one thing I was adamant about was making sure everything had at least a two-car garage on them. So I'm pretty comfortable that you can get, most people who buy townhomes don't use big trucks or, I don't think there's one big truck at General's Run. Most people have mid-sized to small cars that live in townhomes, and I'm pretty comfortable that the garages will fit the people who usually buy townhomes.
And we're certainly open to whatever the planning commission thinks is appropriate.
Is space behind the garage enough? If you had two cars parked outside of each of these garages, that then they can, you know, is there enough maneuvering, you know, back out, you know, get out?
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm very comfortable on that, too.
All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, we will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak either for or against this project. Seeing no one, then we will close this public hearing. Ask for any further comments or questions?
There are none, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
There you go. All right, congratulations. Thank you. All right, our next item is an annexation plan of services, an annexation petition for approximately 190 linear feet, 0.22 acres of Anell Drive right-of-way, City of Murfreesboro applicant, Ms. Rush.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, Commissioner. The City of Murfreesboro is proposing to annex 190 linear feet segment of Anell Drive right-of-way, beginning at the Joby-Jackson Parkway and then extending south. This request is due to inquiries that we've received to potentially develop the adjoining property. The adjoining property is in the city limits, and it is zoned, single-family residential. And we've been, like I've said, we've received inquiries about subdividing that property and building single-family homes on that. In order to accommodate that type of a subdivision, they would need to have a driveway accessing off of Anell Drive. Seeing that this is in the city, we would need to have that right-of-way then in the city limits. The city staff had taken us to the County of Rutherford, and the Rutherford County Road Board did consider it on their January 6 hearing, and they've decided to defer it. They needed to do some additional research for legal reasons, and they will reconvene next month and reconsider this. So staff is asking for a deferral on this annexation for this evening. Because we did advertise for the public hearing, we ask that you do open up the public hearing at this point, though. Thank you.
All right. Okay, any questions? We'll open the public hearing on this item and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding this annexation plan of services and annexation petition. Nobody hiding back there? So we will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Move for deferral.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Our next item, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance 2019-809 to the following. Section two is interpretation and definitions regarding the definition of family. Section 10, variances. Section 18, regulations of general applicability regarding lighting fixtures at recreational fields. And section 27, landscaping and screening regarding landscaping for stormwater management areas. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Is that you, Mr. Blomley?
That would be me and Mr. Ives, and since my partner in crime's not here right now, I will, I'll go to sections 18 and 27, and then, and then Mr. Ives and/or Mr. Hankins, I just don't know. It's just, Mr. Ives can handle section 10 and section two.
Sorry about that.
Start off with section 18, the regulations of general applicability. It's kind of a catch-all section in our zoning ordinance. You recall at the work session meeting a few weeks ago, I mentioned that the Recreation Department recently came before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance to the height of lighting fixtures at recreational fields. And our Board of Zoning Appeals had seen this variance at various recreational facilities a number of times in the past. They approved it, but they had a little bit of trepidation about approving it and said, we don't want to see these anymore. We want an amendment to the zoning ordinance to move forward to where these are allowed by right. The height of lighting fixtures that are needed at recreational fields are allowed by right. So we have written an ordinance amendment to section 18 that addresses the board's concerns, and Mr. Halliburton's here, and he can speak further on that as he was at the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. But we are hopeful that this does address the board's concerns about that issue. Section 27, landscaping and screening deals with stormwater management areas. Back in August, we had discussed at our, I believe it was in August, our day planning commission meeting about how to handle landscaping and screening for stormwater management areas. It was the general consensus of the planning commission that these were really amenities. There was, it was kind of an open space area, pockets of open space in developments that were seen as being beneficial to the development, and they didn't necessarily need to be screened. And so we took that direction from the planning commission and kind of elaborated on that and said, well, rather than screening, what if we just seek to enhance their visual appeal by adding more greenery, more landscaping, make it look more like a natural setting? Instead of, as you know, sometimes they can just look like a bowl holding water or a crater, not holding water. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't hold water. So we have written an ordinance amendment that seeks to beautify those areas and enhance them as an amenity for, you know, both residential and commercial sites so that they are even more of an asset to a development. So those are the two parts of the ordinance amendment that I'd like to go over, and then Mr. Ives, as a couple that he'd like to go over.
I would, and thank you very much. I thought Ms. Rush would talk longer. I'm sorry. With regard to section two, the definition of family, currently, our ordinance requires that for a group home of up to eight unrelated individuals with a disability, that there be one person, additional person as a house parent or guardian to operate within the home. And that is not a requirement of federal law. We have not actually imposed that requirement, and if we were to and were challenged, we would lose. The fact is that under federal law, eight persons who have a disability can get together on their own without any kind of other sponsor or person there. They can join together, rent or buy a house and live together, supporting each other in overcoming their disability, and that is illegal under the Federal Fair Housing Act, and we feel that our ordinance should not be in conflict with the Federal Fair Housing Act. So that the amendment would simply take out the requirement for at least one person functioning as a house parent or guardian. They can have that, and if the, there are also some commercially-sponsored or even non-commercially, there's a variety of charitable organizations, religious organizations that sponsor these, and they may very well require there be one or more persons in the home to sort of manage it. That's certainly fine, but they don't have to have one. So that would be the effect of the amendment to definition of family. With regard to variances, the intent here is not really to change anything, but to make it clear. I think that as it currently stands, if you try to read it carefully, it says the same thing several times in slightly different ways, and what that opens up is the possibility of a challenge that it's confusing and therefore the ordinary person can't understand it and you can't enforce it. And it was challenged on that basis in court. We survived that challenge, but I considered that we were at risk, and the intent here is to simply state it once and use the same term consistently, land, as opposed to talking about land one place and property another place and lot in another place when we're still talking about the same thing. So the intent is to make it clear, understandable, both for staff and for the public, so that we can handle these appropriately in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, we will open the public hearing and ask if anybody would like to come forward to speak on this item. Since we don't see anybody out there, we will close the public hearing and ask if there are any further questions or comments.
I'll just make a comment about this. I know it sounds silly, but if you, y'all got to see the BZA meeting on this park issue and the lights, it was a difficult meeting. It was difficult to understand if it wasn't self-made with respects to these lighting fixtures and where we had difficulty with other people saying you can't do this because it's self-made on other, having nothing to do with lights, but just other applications. So I just want to say- So I just want to say thanks for jumping on it so quickly, not that we've got another park coming along anytime soon, but the fact, who knows, but the fact of the matter is we got it resolved in a way that is workable, and everybody now will understand that if we're rezoning a particular area of park, then in all likelihood, you're going to have lights in it. And I just appreciate you getting on it, so.
My pleasure.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'll make a similar comment related to the landscaping of the retention, detention ponds. I know there's been some gray area there and some subjectivity associated with that, and it's put everybody in a tough spot on occasion. So the idea of using those as an amenity, if you will, and but yet to compromise with, you know, addressing them up somewhat, so that they're not just craters, I think that's great. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If no further comments, I'll make a motion that we approve all these proposed amendments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all very much for that. Under staff reports and other business, I'm going to start, just in case y'all have any more, I'm going to go ahead and jump in. We would like to introduce the newly-named interim planning director for the City of Murfreesboro, effective this afternoon at 4:39, is what I heard. So, welcome Greg McKnight. We're thrilled to have you joining the planning crew up here, and also wanted to say, I should say, let me tell you a little bit, Greg has been in, I have made some notes here, he's the Director of Project Development for the city. It's a position he's held for the last year, which he will continue to maintain some of the duties from that position as well. But also, big thank you to Matthew Blomley, our Assistant Director of Planning, who has been the interim in this, or been the acting, I guess they called you, Planning Director, and we appreciate you stepping in and doing that, and as always, the hard work and everything that you did for us during that time, because it has been a busy time. So, thank you very much, and welcome, Greg, we're excited. All right, what other staff reports or other business?
I got a couple.
Okay.
I'm going to save one of my survey emails. I know that Ms. Jones and Ms. Garland are going to be out for our Tuesday meeting, remember we have a Tuesday meeting next week instead of a Wednesday meeting? And so I just wanted to survey the rest of you, make sure that we will have the other five in attendance, especially Mr. Halliburton, since he will be substituting for Ms. Jones.
I'll be here. I won't be Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Halliburton. Thank you, Mr. Halliburton.
So we'll have all five other members there on Tuesday. Great, thank you. My other item of new business is, we have a, I was looking at the Planning Commission calendar compared to a, one of our, so as municipal planners, we don't get a lot of travel opportunities, and so we have a couple of state planning conferences every year. Our winter-slash-spring planning conference, put on by the Tennessee Chapter of the American Planning Association, is from March 4th to the 6th. March 4th is a Wednesday, that's our Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to send several of our staff to that conference. We always try to have a delegation there. I don't want anybody to feel like they need to stay back for a Planning Commission meeting, including myself, because I'd like to go. So what I would like to, for the Planning Commission to consider is, possibly, if there are no conflicts, possibly moving the March 4th Planning Commission meeting to March the 11th at 6:00 PM. And I wanted to see, I know I didn't give you a heads-up about this, and if we need to wait to make this decision, that's perfectly fine.
Good with me.
I'm fine. For Mr. Martin and Mr. Smotherman, that may be the evening of a council work sessions that would double y'all up. I didn't want to overload y'all.
I appreciate the light agenda tonight, considering what we're doing tomorrow night, so we'll call it squared.
March 11th, looks good.
And so if that's the pleasure of the Planning Commission, I'd appreciate a vote as such.
Okay, so a vote to move our March, what'd you say, 4th? Yes, March 4th Planning Commission meeting to March 11th at 6:00 PM.
It's March 6th, isn't it?
No, she'll.
No, is it right?
Wednesday, March 4th, we'll move to Wednesday, March 11th, 6:00 PM. Do we have a vote for that, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, March 11th it is.
Thank you, I think we'll have some happy staff.
Question for you, Matt, is there a chance we could get all our hours in by going?
Oh, yeah.
Are there any training sessions there that we could attend?
I'll look into that, I'll look into that. And I'll look and see how much we have in our budget this year as well for training.
It should be free for commissioners.
Sorry?
No.
All right. Any other business?
I would just like to say thank you to Matthew for his hard work during this period of time, while he's had all his regular duties, plus assuming the duties of the planning director for this time, so, and I think Matthew's done a great job for us, and I appreciate that, so thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, David, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And not to follow, of course, each one of us don't need to say something, but Matthew, you've always stepped up every time we've asked you to, you've done a phenomenal job again, and we appreciate it, and it doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
All right. Any other business tonight?
Nothing else from me.
Okay, then we stand adjourned.